Hello, everybody, and welcome to Quinn Sigammon Community College. And the third hearing of the task force, the Higher Education Disability Task Force. I'm State Representative Tom Santacandro. I am the House Chair of the Joint Committee on Higher Education. And I'm joined here with the Senate Chair of the Joint Committee on Higher Education, Michael Moore. And I'm, this is Michael Moore's home district, and I'm going to turn it over to Michael for a welcome, or whatever else he wants to say.
Well, it's nice, well, actually, I am also alum of Quinn Sigammon Community College, so it's great to be here. And thank you all for coming. This is actually, I don't think a lot of people think about the inclusion aspect of students with intellectual disabilities when you're looking at higher education. So I think this is an important focus for us to be looking at. We want to make sure that every aspect of society gets the appropriate skills so that they can be successful, so that they can move on, have a quality of life. And I think this is a very important topic. And I want to thank the, my co-chair in the House for actually recommending this. I think it was a very good initiative, so, thank you. And thank you all for being here this afternoon.
Thank you, Senator. We have a great task force here, and I'm going to introduce the members that are here. You've already heard from Senator Michael Moore. Also on the task force is State Representative Kim Ferguson, and she is being represented today by Justine Cagiano. And I don't know, I work hard at these names, I don't do very well. Thank you for being here. We also have the Chancellor of UMass Amherst, Chancellor Subswami. We also have Dr. Dana Malifaria, who is the President of Bridgewater State University. He was the host of the first hearing we had, but he's not able to attend today. We also have the Commissioner of the Department of Developmental Services, Elin Howe. Charlie Desmond, who is the Chairman of the Board of Higher Education, should be here later on today. Also, we have Richard Daugherty, who is the, with the Association of Independent Colleges and Universities in Massachusetts. He's being represented today by the Vice President for Governmental Relations and General Counsel, Robert McCarron. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Michael Stein, who is a professor at Harvard University Law School, was also our host last week at Harvard University when we had the second hearing for the task force. Jim Brett, who is the President and CEO of the New England Council. Julia Landau, who is the Senior Project Director for Mass Advocates for Children. Deb Hart, who is the Educational Coordinator for the Institute for Community Inclusion. Brian Heffernan, who is a student, or was a student, at Massachusetts Bay Community College.
I am.
Thank you, Brian. Deborah Smith Presley, who is the CEO and founder of the Garrett Presley Autism Resource Center. Thank you for being here. And Susan Senator, who is an author and public speaker and autism activist, who will be joining us later on. So, thank you all for being here. Like I said, this is the third hearing we're having for the task force. The first one was at Bridgewater State University. The second one last week was at Harvard University. We're here at Quinn Sigammon today. And next Friday, we're hosted at the University of Massachusetts by Chancellor Subswami. So, and that's next Friday at nine o'clock. We're going to get started. The only thing I'll ask is that you shut off your cell phones, or put them on silence or vibrate. We have, I'm not sure on how many people are going to be testifying today. So hopefully, we usually have a four-minute time period for them. I'm not sure we're going to use that today, but we'll see how this goes as we move along. The first person that's going to testify is Kathy Kelly, the Director of Transition Services at Northeast Arc. Come on up, and you can have a seat right there.
Thank you for having me. My name is Kathy Kelly. I'm the Director of Transition Services at the Northeast Arc in Denver, so I'm representing that region of the state. But I hope I'm representing all students with intellectual and developmental disabilities and their need for, I believe, stronger programs at the state and community colleges. So I'd like to, I'll keep my statements brief. I'm hoping to have some questions. I like to say that thanks to IDEA, more students are more prepared nowadays for exiting high school. They're prepared for jobs, and they're prepared and want to go to college, just as their peers are hoping and wishing to do. I'm concerned, though, that there's not a lot out there that's existing for them. There's not a lot of options that are out there for the variety of abilities that need the services. The programs that I'm aware of in my area are offered through North Shore Community College, Middlesex, and Leslie, the threshold program. Through those programs, it's often limited, the enrollment. They're limited often to about 20 students, so, and you have to compete to get into the programs. And it's often around your intellectual ability, and there's usually a cutoff based on their cognitive level. And they don't often offer residential options, which a lot of students are looking for. They want to learn to be independent and live independently. And only one of those three programs I mentioned have that option. And with those programs is often limited access to abilities to try jobs and have internships. So they, they might touch upon the pre-employment and have some opportunities, but they're still limited in the amount and the variety of options for work. And they can often be expensive. So those are my concerns around those programs. I'm also seeing that some of the school districts in our area, Andover and North Andover, have collaborated with Northern Essex Community College, and they're trying to offer some additional options. But this, we still need more. We desperately need more. We have the employment-first option that's coming upon us in January. We'll no longer have the ability to have people work in workshops. That's going to cause a greater need out there for, for students who are exiting schools to be better prepared for employment. And they're going to need to be prepared for specialty jobs, not just the bagging jobs. They're going to need to be trained in careers that they want to be part of. And I think that state colleges and community colleges could provide that, that training for them. So my concern, you know, is that we need more programs. And I have some ideas for some solutions. I'd like to see some more options for a wider range of abilities out there, not just folks who qualify intellectually, which is often at the, you know, 70 or above IQ. I'd like to see more training for college staff so that they're able to respond to the population that they're serving. I'd like to see more employment-focused certificate programs that offer internships. I'd like to see some more residential options in the schools so that students can not only attend college, but have an opportunity to live and develop those independent skills. And I think that we need to educate our high schools a little bit more about what's going on out there in these programs so that they can better communicate to parents what's out there. So I'm here to represent the parents, I'm here to represent some of the districts that sit on our task force, but I'd just like to know what's, are there more exciting challenges that are going to be offered out there in the future? Are people aware, as we are, of these needs?
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Hold on a second.
Okay.
Do we have any questions from the committee?
Yes.
Commissioner Howe.
Kathy, do you have any of the participants in your current program at Northeast, do any of them go to college programs?
Yes, they do. They attend the three different programs that I mentioned.
Okay.
I'm particularly excited to talk about the North Shore Community College program that last year piloted through a grant from the Tower Foundation, Bridge to the Future, which was a one-year, two-semester program that introduced pre-employment skills. They work in the same cohort, but they travel among, around the campus, and they learn independent skills, travel skills, what it means to be a college student. But what they didn't have and what they were missing was a vocational component. And so this year, the Northeast Arc collaborated with the Tower Foundation, and we've applied. And I think we feel really good about receiving a grant that'll offer a second-year certificate program that will modify this existing program at North Shore Community College to include four track areas in horticulture, culinary, hospitality, and the arts. So these students will be able to attend the college for a second year and receive a certificate and work in an internship. Those are the programs we're hoping to see more of.
Any other questions? Deborah.
I really need a little time to digest everything that you said. I appreciate you're giving some solutions because I'm sure that these solutions are answers to some of the problems that the students are facing. Your program, the Northeast Arc, is it for individuals in the high school setting, the age range of high school?
We don't have a program, per se. We provide services and resources. So I service any student between 14 and 26 in the transition age.
Okay. You also mentioned that there aren't many options, and I'm quite aware that there aren't. Can you just tell us what some of the areas of employment that they are offering?
The colleges that we, that we see offering a lot of jobs related to business and filing and clerk-type jobs. We're not seeing a wide variety. We think that there should be a wider variety in the areas that our students wish to be employed in. So I know that we're trying to expand that at North Shore with the animal care, hospitality, culinary.
That is definitely a true finding. In some programs on the east side of Massachusetts, they're looking at recycling and janitorial services. So lots of families are stuck, particularly if their son or daughter is not interested in that particular area. So I do promote and compliment you on the hospitality and the arts type of program. Could you just say a little bit about what it takes for an individual to have a transition plan, to try to prepare them, to kind of bridge into these college settings?
So we, because of IDEA, we have, we're fortunate to have what's called a transition planning forum in all children's IEPs. And what we really encourage families to do is do what's called person-centered planning, plan around the individual. So we encourage the families to create a vision for the student based on their hopes, and then you plan backwards. You take the vision, and you sit down with the team at the school, and you plan based on that, not based on their abilities and their assessments. So with that said, if a student wishes to go to college, you're going to make that happen. And, and so we have, you know, folks like me coming here to tell, tell everyone what they want for college programs. And they want something more than janitorial and recycling. They want careers.
Yes, definitely.
Any other questions? Julia?
I also think your testimony was great, and really laid out a lot of the problems and some great solutions. So, thank you. The certificate programs that you're hoping to develop at North Shore, will those be available to students with and without disabilities to get a certificate in those areas?
Yes, they will. The funder wants it to be just for individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities, but we're finding that by and large, students entering community colleges these days are not prepared for community college. And they might have a significant learning disability that doesn't qualify in that intellectual developmental. So North Shore really doesn't want to turn those folks away, because there are people that are getting stuck in that loop, you know, in the community college of not being able to test in, in place into classes because they just didn't have the math skills or the necessary skills. So they, North Shore really wants to make sure that that, that this program is open to them as well. But the focus will be on intellectual and developmental disabilities.
So any student in North Shore could apply whether they have any type of disability or not?
Yeah.
Get that certificate?
Yeah.
That's great.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you for coming down today.
Thank you.
I'm not sure if, John Rochford? John, do you want to testify?
Sure. Hello. My name is John Rochford. I work for the University of Massachusetts Medical School at the UNIS Kennedy-Shriver Center for, it's located in Waltham. And in particular, I work for a project called, most people know it as New England Index. We provide to the public for free information about programs and services for people with disabilities residing in Massachusetts. And I also supervise the Autism Insurance Resource Center. You may know that a couple of years ago, a law was passed requiring insurance companies to cover programs and services like applied behavior analysis for people with autism. And, but I'm here today to talk about my research. Index, because it's been providing information to the community of people with disabilities, has always had to make its websites accessible to that community. So even if you were blind, or deaf, or a head-stick user, you could come to our website and get the information you need to live your life independently. And what I started exploring about three years ago was extending that accessibility to people with cognitive disabilities. How do you make information on the web, for instance, accessible to them? And you may wonder, what is this, why am I talking about this here? And it's because I've, my project has also been developing online courses since the mid-'90s. And we've always made those online courses accessible to people with disabilities, in the same way we made our other websites accessible. And so if you were blind, you could come and take college-level courses through us because the course was accessible to you. And I'd like to, and what I've been doing is exploring best practices of making college-level courses accessible to people with cognitive disabilities. So I think that this, you know, the whole world, whether you know it or not, is going online in the college world. And I don't think that people with intellectual and developmental disabilities should be left out of that. And since the whole world is going there, we should take them with us. And so that's what I've been exploring. I'm involved in a pilot project now, and I can't tell you the name of the university that I'm working with because it's asked for confidentiality, but it's a, it's a project to mount courses for this population, do testing, see what works, what doesn't work, and revise and reiterate, and iterate, rather. And so that's one. And I've also been working with Sage, there's a college in New York, in Troy, New York, called the Sage Colleges. And they've done a great job mounting courses for people with autism. So that one I can tell you about. So, so anyway, without me, I don't really want to keep going on and on. Anybody have questions?
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony. Go ahead, Deborah.
I just find it fascinating. I'm familiar with the New England Index, and I'm, I'm happy to hear that you're taking on this research on development. Just what comes to my mind is that this is 21st century stuff. And many times, people with disabilities, particularly autism, have been left out of the loop. I just can think about my son and his roommates, how they could benefit from an online course with technology that is user-friendly. A lot of them love technology, and they use their iPads and things with the programs. I'm not really all that tech-savvy about the programs. But they just learn, and I've seen so many of them that love to do math, and science, and, and reading and writing. They just go crazy. So sometimes, people with autism cannot sit in a setting like this, like a classroom setting. They could do so much if they could operate that with an online course. So I just have to say kudos, and keep us posted, and thank you for sharing that information.
Okay. Any other questions? Go ahead, Julia.
I second, in terms of it's really important, and it's great that you're looking at those issues. Have you thought about, or do you have in your concept yet, is the idea to take existing college courses and figure out how to make them accessible to a larger population, or, and/or are you thinking to develop new courses that don't currently exist? Do you know what I'm trying to ask?
I do. One thing to know, well, the pilot project I mentioned is taking courses that have been taught on campus for years, and taking that content and trying to purvey it online. A big thing with this kind of work is that when you talk about accessible design, typically, it's, the industry thinks of the design of the site, but for people with cognitive disabilities, it's also the content. So, for instance, purveying content in a multimodal way, if a, if a student could come in and say, "I learn best by watching videos of the content," or "I learn best by seeing some text and images together," or, you know, picking the way that they, either for the whole course, or for a particular page. So what I'm saying is that it's a much more, even the people who are accessibility evangelists for people with physical disabilities throughout the world are hesitant when it comes to people with cognitive disabilities because the challenges are much greater. But, but, but I think that, to me, that's the exciting part. So we, for instance, we have on staff instructional designers. The UNIS Kennedy-Shriver Center has, since the '60s, been developing instructional design techniques and teaching people with intellectual disabilities how to read, vocabulary. And so we're taking those same techniques and trying to purvey them online.
Do you think that this multimodal way of making course content accessible would benefit the non-disabled students as well?
That's, yes, I'm, I could kiss you for that question. One thing that accessibility evangelists such as myself say all the time, that when you make something accessible, you make it easier to use for everyone.
That's right.
Yes. And so, for instance, we were publishing some, some pretty complicated reports online recently, and we talked, and what we did was, we started experimenting with posting plain-language summaries of the reports right up front, sort of like an executive-level summary. So very simple language, very simple expressing of ideas. And we did that because we were trying to reach the audience of people with intellectual and developmental disabilities. But I just know, you know, secretly, in the back of my mind, I knew, I betcha most people are going to read that only and never going to get to the rest of the report.
But at least they read that, as opposed to reading nothing.
Yeah, right.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Could you just leave your information? Don't run away from us.
Thank you.
I have plenty of business cards.
Thank you. We'll be in touch with you while we try to get our report together for this. So thank you for coming down today.
Okay.
Next, we have Patricia Bell and Angie Cullinan from Hadley Public Schools. Are they here? Lumeen Montisso from Dorchester Academy.
Hello.
Hello.
My name is Lumeen Montisso, and I am a student from Dorchester Academy. I am an inclusive, non-current enrollment known as ICE student. I go to, I go to school at UMass Boston. For two years, I took classes at UMass, and I had a good time. The classes that I took were creative writing and piano. Creative writing was about creating stories and poetry. I like the professor because she helped me with my assignments. It helps me write better, and it helps me write poetry better. The book I read helped me think and open up more. My piano class was about learning hand position and working both hands together. I also learned the names of the keys and how to read music. I like to play piano because it is interesting me. I like how music flows. I would like to tell you that the ICE program helps high school students to get college experience and learn more about college. It helps me learn about the, the reality of being a college student. There are a lot of events at college, and I like to take part within them. I have grown more independent because of this program. I know how to take public transportation by myself. I can get around the campus by myself, and I can update my UMass card by myself. This semester, I always start working on campus. This program given me more confidence and more things to explore so I can learn new things. I would say to the state residents, this program is important. It is important to me, and it is important to all high school students in Boston and around Massachusetts. Some people may see people with unique learning needs as weak on the outside, but on the inside, we are strong. We have many talents and big dreams. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much for your testimony today.
Thank you.
So what is it you want to do? What is your big dream?
My big dream is to become an Olympian.
Right, in what?
Because I run.
Oh, I think I met you before at UMass, right?
Mm-hmm.
Now, are you on the, are you on the track team now?
Yeah, I was about to go to indoor track team in my high school team.
Great. Well, thank you very much. Do I have any other questions from the committee? Brian?
How does your disparity impact regular students, your teachers, and other staff of faculty?
Well... get, to have a real dream to... To get experience about whether, whether they want to have a college, or maybe, maybe a two-year college or four years, because they have other dreams too. And...
Do you have a question, Deborah?
I just wanted to say, thank you so much. You're very brave.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the committee? Great job, and thank you for coming out. Nice seeing you again.
Thank you.
Good luck with everything. Next, we have Jamie Finstein from Mass Bay Community College.
Hello, everyone. That is a tough act to follow.
Well done, Lumeen.
So I'm here today just to talk about Mass Bay's experience supporting students with cognitive and intellectual disabilities. And I think we represent the metro west Boston area. So I think Mass Bay serves 15 or 20 towns? I don't know the exact numbers. Sorry about that. But I can tell you that Mass Bay has been supporting... and intellectual disabilities, and I think we represent the metro west Boston area. So, I think Mass Bay serves 15 or 20 towns? I don't know the exact numbers. Sorry about that. But I can tell you that Mass Bay has been supporting students with intellectual and developmental disabilities formally since 2007, when we received funding through inclusive concurrent enrollment. Now, we call that program Transitional Scholars, but I'll get into that a little later. We've supported, I counted yesterday, at least 58 students, probably more, but 58, well, I can give you data and names and their whole history, through this program, including the 16 current students that we're serving right now in our Wellesley Hills campus. Mass Bay sustained the ICE program after our five years of pilot funding ended, and that's why we now call it the Transitional Scholars Program. We wanted to give it a name that didn't have an acronym to go along with it. We wanted to just have these students be Mass Bay students and not have them referred to as those ICE students. So, that's what the name change was about. We also expanded the program a bit to now include students post-22, and we also are including students who have received a high school diploma, who are either pre-22 or post-22. So, we felt that there was those two cohorts of students that we weren't currently serving in ICE, and so, we felt that those students had a place in this program. We are looking currently at applying to become a comprehensive transition program through the U.S. Department of Education, and so, that would afford some of the students coming to our program the opportunity to receive financial aid, which is a huge deal. And finally, we are looking to expand opportunities for students to our, hopefully, new Framingham Campus in the next two years. You might know more about that than I do.
I do, yeah.
Because students want programs that are currently on our Framingham Campus, and our Framingham Campus is not accessible by public transportation. So, our hope is that that campus, my dream is to see a bigger campus that has more programming for students, things like culinary, other vocational tracks that students are looking for that Mass Bay doesn't currently have. So, I've heard whispers that that's something in the plans, so I'm very hopeful. So, that's what I have to say, and if I could say that I'd be happy to have a question from Brian Heffernan, not to put him on the spot.
How does the students impact you?
Very much so, Brian. Good question. So, the students impact myself, just because I work with them daily, and seeing the vision that these students have and pushing myself to do more and more and more to make their goals a reality. So, I like to say that nothing is off the table. I tell parents, "I will drive to a nightly basketball game. I will drive to Worcester and take you home." I will go out of my way to make every possibility available for students. But on the broader sense, on the campus, I think these students impact the whole community of college. I keep hearing from faculty and from other students that it really makes the sense of a community college that much more of a community. I think that, Brian, you could probably tell people a thing or two about what it's like to be in a classroom. I know from hearing from professors that having students with intellectual disabilities in the classroom is really beneficial to the whole setting. So, you bring a lot of insight that other students kind of aren't thinking about. You have a dedication and a motivation behind you that inspires the other students. You might start up things like Glee Club that benefits the whole campus. So, it's, the possibilities are kind of endless of the extent to which these students can bring, you know, whatever that next word is that I can't think of. Good question. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the committee? Can you just, oh, go ahead, Julia.
Can you just tell folks a little bit more about the Federal Higher Ed Act and how, what it means to become a comprehensive transition program?
Yes, I'm still learning this, but good question. So, my understanding is that we need to make a more formalized program, and so, that's something that we're looking at closer, to become a comprehensive transition program, but also in our own minds. So, we're looking towards having things like an internship component to this program, having, being able to actually clarify how many credits a student is coming to this program for. They're looking for a credential that a student comes out of this with. So, these are things we really hadn't, hadn't on our plate before, but I think it makes sense, because I do have students that are coming through Transitional Scholars that are earning certificates or have a goal in mind that is tangible that we can help them with. So, those are the pieces that I'm understanding so far. And then, I think it's the idea of giving them opportunities. It's not a segregated program. So, for example, it has to be inclusive at least half of the time, but our program is fully inclusive all of the time, and they have to have like opportunities as any other Mass Bay community college student would.
So, these were the amendments to the Federal Higher Ed Act when Congress decided that nationally, they wanted to support including students with intellectual disabilities. And so, isn't that right where these amendments came from?
Mm-hmm. I believe so.
Right, and so, then it's setting up these ways that colleges, if they are inclusive, can access financial aid and other things for students.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So, it's great that Mass Bay's moving in that direction. I think you'd be the first, are there other colleges that have done that in Massachusetts yet?
I don't think other community colleges.
That's what this program is gonna be.
Right.
But it's, well, yeah, it has to be inclusive, and there's a lot of criteria about it, but that's great. North Shore is too.
Absolutely.
Any other questions? Deborah?
The students in your program, are they both in high school and after high school?
Absolutely, yep. So, it's about, I'm trying to remember the breakdown, 25% of the students coming to the program are done with high school. Some of them are pre-22 and did receive a diploma and accepted the diploma and left high school. Some are post-22 and either did or did not receive their high school diploma. I have some students who the diploma is not in the cards, and so, they're coming 18 to 22, and then can stay on if they want to continue their educational goals. We kind of opened that door a little wider from what ICE historically was.
That's great. Do they receive a certificate or some type of associate degree?
So, that's dependent on the student. So, if a student would like to pursue an associate's or a certificate program, and they do have a high school diploma, then that is certainly an option. But we currently don't have just a non-credit certificate for this program, and that's something we're looking into with the comprehensive transition program, to actually kind of have a culmination of, you know, you've completed Transitional Scholars after you've met this criteria, and that would be a non-credit certificate. Whereas, some of our students, I have a student who's actually gonna graduate in May with a certificate. He's a Boston public school student, and he was coming to this program, and then, once we sustained the program, he decided to be on his own outside of it. So, he's currently coming to Mass Bay independently, and he will receive a certificate in May.
And another question. How much is the tuition to participate in the program?
So, we don't have tuition, per se. We have a program fee that covers the supports for this program. So, that's the one way we had to sustain it. Unfortunately, it is one of the barriers to this program now, so that's something that I'm currently working on as well. It is $5,000 a semester to come to the Transitional Scholars Program. That includes 10 hours a week of educational coaching. It includes books and school supplies. It includes person-centered planning. It includes a lot of the program structure so that a student can come and fully be supported on campus.
That's great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question also? Hello. Who's paying the tuition party? Is it coming from the school systems, from the family? Do you have scholarships at this point?
How did you move away from that ICE piece?
So, it's all of the above.
Okay.
So, we are, can you guys hear me? We are sharing resources. School districts are providing either straight funding to Mass Bay, or they are providing educational coaches to help the students on campus. We share those resources. Students can also access scholarships through our Mass Bay Foundation, and some people are paying out of pocket. So, it's kind of, we will take it however it comes, however someone wants to figure it out. But we've also been taking MRC funds through students who are eligible for MRC to be able to help cover some of it.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you very much for coming down and for the work you've done.
I actually thought I wanted a question. Sure. Have you, and you may not have done this yet, but have you looked into using some of the Medicaid waiver supports and funding as a way to get supports for students?
So, those are questions I've asked people and haven't, haven't gotten too far with that, but I need to look more into that, because that would be something that the post-22 or the, could be eligible for. And I've also, I know about the PASS plan, that students can set up a PASS plan to help pay for it. I need to delve more into this. We're looking really at the financial piece now, so we're just on the brink of jumping into that. I should say that we're also, hopefully, you'll come, we're hosting a fundraising event in the spring. It's in the works that will hopefully bring in scholarship monies to help students cover the cost of this program, but also, we're looking to connect with local business and industry to create internship opportunities. So, that's gonna be the goal of our fundraising.
Sounds exciting. Thank you.
Sure is. Thank you.
Next, we have Cynthia Moore. Cynthia Moore?
I actually don't come with a solution. I come with input to provide to you as both a parent and someone who's been in and out and around the special education community for quite a while. I am a member of the Special Education Advocacy Network, which is a group that of lawyers and special education advocates across the state of Massachusetts. I'm a former board member of them. I also happen to be the co-president of the North Borough and South Borough Special Education Advisory Committee. But actually, today, I'm coming to talk to you as a mother. I have two children, a 24-year-old daughter and a 14-year-old son, and my 24-year-old daughter accomplished three degrees in four years, got a job pretty quickly thereafter, as you can imagine, because she's rather bright, and had an exceptional experience in college. And my son, who's 14 years old, wants to achieve two degrees, two majors and one minor when he goes to college, and then an MBA. So, he has a very well-defined career path. And before I tell you about his disabilities, let me finish telling you about his vision. My son wants to get a degree in cybersecurity, and that's going to be his day job. At nighttime, after work, he's gonna start his own video game company. And when he has his video game company up and running, he's gonna quit his day job and be, you know, the next Nintendo, the next Xbox, the next big company like that. And you sit there and you say to yourself, "Well, you know, what 14-year-old boy doesn't want to be a video game programmer these days?" Right? But my son has gone out and taught himself how to program apps by watching videos. My son has taught himself how to set up virtual private networks by watching videos. My son has created an online world, negotiated social norms, consequences of violating those social norms, built collaboratively with other people over a timeline, the world inside of that video game with, you know, buildings and amusement parks and whatnot, all with a combination of medical and neurological differences that, in order to explain him, I have to bring a Venn diagram with me. So, I go to meetings with a Venn diagram, and this Venn diagram has five circles in it, and this is how I help explain people what his challenges are. So, when we're thinking about educating in the post-secondary world for children with disabilities, whether they're intellectual disabilities or developmental disabilities, I hope that we all share the same vision, that these are the future leaders of America. These are our future, you know, Warren Buffets. These are our future Bill Gates. These are people who are gonna accomplish far more than doing recycling or being a good cook. My brother's a professional chef. No offense there. Love him. Love how he does Thanksgiving. But for my son, you know, with his little Venn diagram of explanations, what he requires in a college environment are a number of things that I have a lot of concerns about where to find them. And certainly, I'm beginning my journey in the college world, thinking in his paradigm now, as opposed to my daughter's or my own, which was very, very different. And by the way, he thinks, "Why can't I get two degrees and a minor at the same time? My sister got three." Right? So, that's, that's a great attitude to have. Some of the things that he'll require when he gets there that are gonna be challenging are differentiated teaching. So, one of the prior speakers talked about online video learning, accessing information differently, speech to text, things like that. Because he's profoundly dyslexic, he does best in a multi-sensory environment. You learn not just by being lectured at, you learn by doing, touching, tasting, feeling, experiencing. He requires accommodations that, in our day and age, aren't necessarily considered reasonable accommodations in the workplace. So, where do you fall into accessing your education when your accommodations perhaps are beyond that which an organization would feel was reasonable accommodation? The pacing of education has to be very different for him. I just explained to you how he learns and what he's able to accomplish on his own independently, but my son requires year-round education in order to close his gaps. So, he requires a different pace. For him, carrying a full course load isn't going to be the same as when my daughter carried a full course load. One of the two areas of challenges in terms of accessing higher ed that are very common to kids who aren't nearly as complicated as he is are social deficits, and that impacts, obviously, your quality of life on campus, how to create your own life, how to find programs that you want to be part of, whether you're going to be in the Venture Wilderness Club or you're gonna be part of the student government, learning how to live in dorm housing, having the life skills to live independently. And as we know, living with other people and working with other people comes those conflict resolution skills that are so, so important to all of us. Those things typically are not covered by transition planning. So, while many of us would think that the law requires and would deliver children who are graduating from high school with those schools, skills intact, and we can all point to the federal law and say, "Well, our federal law says we must do things, and our state law says that we're going to be accomplishing this." Even as an advocate myself, I can tell you, I can't even get in my son's transition plans everything he will need. It is a constant battle, and I'm a very talented person. The other part of it that makes education difficult for him to reach is the scholarship component. If you look at the world of scholarships, fundings, and grants, most of them are either academically based, and you say, "Well, he could be an A student, too." But yes, if he's an A student, his student ranking may be different. He may be in an A student, not in the advanced program. He may be an A student in the regular ed program, which changes your student ranking. The other forms of scholarship come from sports achievement. I'm hard-pressed to find a sports scholarship given to a unified sports athlete or to a separate sports athlete. I don't see them. I've looked. And the last part of it is usually community achievement. And that's not to say that our children don't have involvement in community and that they don't have a life in community, but in general, after you get done with all the private therapies, after you get done with the extratutorial, after you get done with the long commute to your specially-designed program that's out of your town, your child has very little energy to be a leader in some other area. I would love it if he got to be, you know, a scholarship for being a leader in the online world that he created. He's taught other children and adults how to participate in that world with their, with their kids. That, to me, is a leadership quality worthy of scholarship. And last but not least, I think it would be important to think about, you know, when a lot of children access college, I shouldn't say it's children, you know, they're young adults, they also are able to juggle a part-time job on top of it. If you've got significant neurological differences, your base of energy to put out during the day is much more limited. So, to expect a child to be able to juggle both an intellectually challenging program that's going to meet their post-secondary goals and hold down a job at the same time is just not very realistic for a lot of children, and not because they don't have the desire, but because they're neurologically different. They can't actually accomplish that at the same time. Now, my son might be able to, because he's planning on his post-secondary, post-college life, including a daytime job and developing his company on the sideline. But I wanted to make sure that I came here today and gave you both a perspective of a high achiever with multiple disabilities and also the barriers for him in achieving that, and ask that, in your efforts, you think about and plan for those, those challenges.
Thank you very much for your testimony. We've been joined by the Chair of the Board of Higher Education, Charlie Desmond.
Thank you.
Thanks for laying out, you gave us lots of information, lots of things to think about. We are in the process of taking this information back. There's, a lot of stuff we get is pretty dense from the testimony, and we're attempting to write a report and make recommendations to the legislature as how we move forward to address this. And you've addressed some things that, you know, I personally hadn't really thought of in the same way that you've been addressing them. Are there any other questions from the committee?
I was just gonna, there were really important points, and it'd be great if you had time to submit some written testimony so we could really incorporate some of that into the report. I think that'd be really helpful, really for everybody who's here, if they have that ability.
The, what we, the ability, the website is, is up, and right now, it, you can send it, there's an email link. We're planning to make it more actually user-friendly than just an email link. It's, and I know it's very hokey, and I'm gonna ask you, I'll try this down, but it's, it also operates out of my campaign website, for the lack of a better location for it. It's at tomworksforus.com-taskforce, which is all one word. And that'll bring you up to the main page. It also includes video from the first hearing at Bridgewater State University and a lot of other material that is gonna be, continue to be added to that. So, anybody who's here can just submit their testimony. So anybody who's here can just submit their testimony electronically through that portal and it'll be very helpful. And I appreciate you bringing a lot of this, you know, a lot of this information to our attention and give us something to think about as we move ahead on this. Are there any other questions from the committee? Thank you very much for coming down today.
Thank you.
Could you repeat that, Tom Works for Us?
It's tomworksforus.com. And then there's a, I don't know which way they call that slash. Forward slash task force, all one word. And I believe, the only person I've left is Fred Mislow and I didn't see him in the audience. So is there anybody else here that wanted to testify today? That would like to testify today? Come on up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I saw the invitations and wanted to just stop in and share a little bit about what might be going on here in Worcester. My name is Kate Mishra. I'm a Worcester resident. I have a son who is 19 and is still involved with the Worcester Public Schools. And after a very long journey of research and a lot of meetings, he has been afforded the opportunity to work with both Worcester Public Schools and Worcester State University this fall. As a student, he is currently auditing three classes on campus and is involved with some of the social life that's going on, so he's on campus five days a week with full-time education coaching from the Worcester Public Schools and some other supports. We have on-campus, including their speech-language pathology department. So, so far, we are having a wonderful experience. We've brought the two parties together, which the strength of what's going on for my son hopefully is underscored by the strength of hopefully what will come about here in central Massachusetts because we have lots of wonderful things going on kind of on either end of the state and we seem to have a big black hole in the central part of the state, which is really problematic for students like my son who weren't really ready to go off, maybe out of state to some more established programs that are underway across the country. So we worked really hard to find people to partner with us here in central Mass. What we really need though is resources so that other universities, colleges will open their doors and agree to work with some of the school systems who I'm sure would love to be assisting so many of the other students that are sitting there looking for the same opportunities. So if there's a place where we can really take a look and maybe reach out and find some resources, it's certainly here in central Mass because I knocked on just about every door. But I do want to give kudos to the Worcester Public Schools for their efforts in supporting the individual plan we came up with for my son and working with us. And certainly kudos to Worcester State University who although they have only started this with my son, have fully embraced him, have fully embraced working with the Worcester Public Schools, and we have gotten some wonderful feedback so far. So I'm willing to roll up my sleeves, help you all, whatever we can do here in central Mass to grow this, the initiative and these efforts, please let us know.
Thank you very much for coming down here today. Are there any questions from the committee?
I'm sorry I'm late, but I'm going to ask you a question anyway.
Sure.
What courses, do you happen to know what courses your son is taking at Worcester State?
I sure do because I do a lot of reading on those courses. We have Earth is a Greenhouse Climate Change, which is a freshman seminar course. So it's a very small course and it's taught by a professor who also runs Mass Audubon here locally and she's been dynamic. And what has been stunning to me is the universal design that is afforded through the blackboard system. You were talking about the online access for students. So at night, every, all his coursework, all his interaction with other students in collaborative projects with his professor, all goes through this blackboard system and it's amazing. He is able to access, the professor will throw on the chapter and so he can have his Mac read him the chapter, he can read along with it. Everything is already put up and she has done a beautiful job, and this is for all her students, so she's already doing universal design whether she knows it or not. A very technical, scientific journal article will be followed as that night's assignment by two links to YouTube videos because of course it's a very timely topic right now. So he's able to, if only skim that article which is way over his head, really grasp and be able to participate fully in the next day's class because he's watched the 60 Minutes video or the YouTube video or, that is also because it's such a timely topic. He also takes early childhood education with another professor who does a wonderful job in presenting the content to all her students in multiple ways and lots of collaborative group work. And he's also taking today, which is why he's not here with me, a creative arts course, which is three hours. It's under their health and something, I'm sorry. But they started with creative writing and now they're on to oral presentations and trying to persuade people and it's been fascinating, run by another really dynamic professor. Worcester State worked very hard to offer Patrick some choices for this first semester, but really they had narrowed down to introduce this to their campus, what professors might be good fits to start off with. And they really chose three amazing people to start with.
And just quickly, during your earlier comments, you said that there were more established programs across the state that were already up and running that might be better equipped to meet some of the needs of your son, Patrick.
Yep.
What institutions from your perspective are kind of setting the standard for how best to do this work?
Well, I wasn't able to look at other programs in Massachusetts, but I was able to research at two different national conferences what was going on around the country and it was amazing. There was a wonderful program at the College of Charleston, which I think out of many of the models I spent the last two and a half years researching, I would have chosen if it wasn't in South Carolina, you'd be there now. I know Bridgewater has done some excellent work, I know UMass-Boston has done some work, certainly I've heard about Jamie's program for years, I know Brian Heffernan and many of the Newton Boys and have known their success for many years.
Thanks.
So this program has actually just been, for your son, was really just a creation? Was it, it's, it's, for lack of a better word, just being created now and is not being funded or formulated by any other influence like the Inclusive Concurrent Enrollment Program?
No.
Or anything like that?
No, it's not and it's not a program. Worcester State would not like it referred to as a program. This is individual supports for a student that they've decided that they would like to try this initiative.
Just to add to that, Worcester Public Schools had the ICE grant for many years and prior to that, they had a federal OSUP grant, Community College Connections, which really started in I think 2001, the whole concept of post-secondary ed for individuals with significant disabilities. And the issue has been, is finding that collaboration of a college that wants to continue that work. And that's been the challenge of our school system. Kate thankfully rolled up her sleeves and really pushed and kind of barreled her way through the city to make those connections on behalf of Patrick. If it wasn't for Kate and her family, truly, this wouldn't exist for Patrick. So the challenge for Worcester is how do you find those collaborations with colleges that almost seem a little afraid of the concept? And then the other issue is the funding for it. You know, it's great, you know, when they first came out with the higher ed law, I was really excited until I realized, okay, you have to have a special transition program and at least from what I've seen around the country, there don't seem to be a lot of colleges who have done that yet. So those are more barriers as I jump in, Kate.
Yeah.
Is Patrick enrolled in a specific program? Is he auditing or is he taking the class for credit?
He started this semester and they wanted him to do three classes and they're all being audited.
Okay.
And the reason for three was to keep him involved on a campus where they felt most of the interpersonal relationships were developed at Worcester State in the classroom.
Sure.
And we're seeing that.
So he is only at Worcester State and he's?
Yep.
Okay.
So he's Worcester State student.
Full-time student.
Yep, his card, he's on campus every day, uses all the facilities and that's how they would like his viewed, I guess, in that model.
So is the expectation, do you know, from the university to bring on more students that would need similar supports as your son?
I think they have, an interest, have indicated an interest in it. They know all about the ICE grant and initiatives around the country that are going on and I think they wanted to start with one and introduce it to their campus in this fashion, so.
Brian, do you have a question?
Yeah, I do. Thank you to point me out. Has there been someone who has been important to Patrick in college and who?
In college?
Yeah.
Well, in college, I think the most important person for Patrick so far has been Tim, who is his education coach. And Tim is a young age, he's a recent college graduate himself, he wants to be a teacher. And because he's similar in age to Patrick, he's really more than an education coach, he's kind of like a mentor to him and Patrick is very comfortable with him. And Tim blends right into the campus because he's the same age and he can interact with not only the professors but the other students really well. So he's very approachable, so that's worked out really well. So I would say that's probably the most important thing, the most important person on campus for Patrick. But can I also mention, Brian, that some of the most important people that got Patrick to where he is was you and some of your friends that Patrick's met through the Mass Down Syndrome Congress because you're a little bit older than Patrick and he saw you be able to go to college. He read articles about you and how successful you were. So that gave him the idea that, well, if Brian and everyone else can do that, I could do that too. And he said, I'd like to go to college because I saw Brian go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
One more question.
Oh, you can't leave, yeah. Go ahead, Deborah.
Thank you. I want to say that you are speaking for a lot of parents because we make things happen and if there's any message we should get, we should understand that parents are powerful, but they also create partnerships. Just a quick question. You were talking about Patrick. Can you tell us if any accommodations had to be made for him in some of his classes?
Well, I'll let you know what the word is on the nine-page Earth is a Greenhouse paper that's coming up in a couple of weeks. But he's, like I said, the three professors already present the content in ways which he's been able to access fully, which has been wonderful. He has had to have a lot of help when there have been papers to be submitted and there have only been two so far, so that worked out well. And we happen to be in three courses where there have been a lot of small group projects and he has, the students have been outstanding that he has been paired with. They've been into also the Worcester Public Schools to do some teaching in the, in two of the three classes, which, there are two elementary schools right next to Worcester State University, so they just walk over. But co-presenting lessons and student learning outcomes and it's been really fascinating to watch. But yes, the longer research paper that's coming up will be a problem.
Great partnership.
Thank you for all your work that you've done on this. Thank you. Is there anyone else that'd like to testify today? Well, thank you very much. I want to thank the Task Force for coming out, for everybody else who took the time out of their day and especially for those folks that testified today. We appreciate your testimony, your interest in this. And like I said, the next meeting or the next hearing for the Task Force is going to be hosted by Chancellor Subsami at the University of Massachusetts campus next Friday morning at nine o'clock. And again, if you want to submit testimony or find out more of what's happening with the Task Force, go to tomworksforus.com-taskforce. And I want to thank everybody for their work here today, so thank you very much.